All right, I'd like to call to order Bristol, Virginia City Council for April 30th, 2019. At this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's great seeing everybody here tonight. Looks like we've got a fair, healthy crowd tonight. We've got a pretty important agenda. It's not a long agenda, but we do have an important agenda tonight. We've got things on here that relate to our trash and our budget discussions, so it's good for you to be here and listen to the discussions. And then we've got a exception report we're going to do for one of the private businesses in town. So, a lot of important things went on tonight. Don't have much else to announce, just hope everything keeps moving forward with the city this spring. So, the weather's good, so let's hope that business follows and hope everybody gets out and starts spending more money, right? Any council got comments? All right, Randy, City Manager?
I'm Mr. Knight.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move into matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. If anyone's failed to sign up, please let the clerk know. We've got Monica Daddio, is that right? Yep. I don't know if I pronounced that right, I'm sorry. But you're the first one up for non-agenda items?
Okay, I just have a quick comment that I would just like everyone to just consider about the trash, that it's really too much for the residents at one time, the big increase. So, just hope that you keep that in mind for everybody, because a lot of people just can't afford that. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Our next person, Michael Pollard.
Thank you. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. As I've made it abundantly clear on multiple instances, I prefer openness and transparency in all cases. In this case, I need to be open and transparent that I posted something in social media that was... that put the city manager in a negative light, and it was not accurate. I corrected that to those on social media that I posted it to, but I did not want... it may have been shared to people who did not see my correction, so I wanted to make it clear here that I was mistaken. I had misunderstood some of the figures that he'd presented. There was clarification later on... this was concerning some budget information. There was clarification later in the budget that if I had read through the entire document and not just the one page, I would have understood his point, but I did share incorrect information, and I did not ask the source of that information. I had... my implication, my intention, was that members of the city council could follow up on it, but I should have asked the source rather than the third parties, and I would like to apologize in this public forum.
Michael, no need to apologize, but I appreciate it, and, you know, as I said, I'm always an open book, and anytime you need anything, you just call or email.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. All right, next person, Renee Hunt?
She's out with Chief Austin, they're having a discussion.
Casey Amro?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Casey Amro, 2231 Collins Street. On behalf of Virginia Organizing, we'd like to thank you for the work that you're doing for our city. We'd also like to thank those of you who have graciously given your time and met with us individually. If we have not met with you, we look forward to doing so in the near future. After our individual meetings and attending school board meetings and city council meetings, it is very apparent and loud and clear that a meeting between school board and city council is not only necessary, but wanted. With that being said, Virginia Organizing would like to invite each of you to a public forum to discuss Bristol, Virginia's public schools. You now have an invitation in your inbox. We will be providing a neutral location and a moderator to facilitate this meeting. We just ask that you come to the table with an open mind and heart and your ideas to discuss possible solutions for our schools. In the end, this will not only benefit our schools, but the city as well, and we can also show our children that not only is Bristol in a tough place, but we can come together as an adult and sit down and find a solution that is in the best interest of all involved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Renee Hunt done?
That's okay.
Hello, my name is Ren... would you call me, did I say?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Renee Hunt, 20 Jackson Lane, and I'm here because I'm really upset over the trash pickup, guys. I'm okay, I'm not fine with it, but I'm okay to manage 33, but 49.50 from $22? That's unbelievable that y'all would do that to us as taxpayers. That's just unbelievable. And I just wanted to come down and voice my opinion, because that's just way out of the range. 33? I can manage it, but 49.50 for trash pickup? Guys, we shouldn't be having to pay that much. Nobody should. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. You want to clarify?
I think Ms. Hunt has two... oh, you can go ahead and sit down. I think she has two garbage cans, so one can's 33 a month, the second can is half of whatever the rate is, which is 16.50, so I think that's the 49.50.
Okay.
And you can pay for $50 for the extra fresh can, so I'll pay for that, but now we'll be managing that every single meal, so that's a bit much.
Okay, thank you. All right, item one on the regular agenda, before we get into that, is there any changes to the regular agenda? Okay. All right, item one, consider resolution on special exception 03-2019 for 500 Gate City Highway, staff report.
Okay, Mayor and council members, you have before you two special exception applications. There was a public hearing last Tuesday, a joint public hearing with the planning commission on these. These are both for pharmaceutical processing in a B3 zone. Of course, one, you all familiar, is at the mall, and the other immediately adjoining the mall property, and I'll show those locations in just a minute, but just wanted to go over the summary there. There have been 25 adjoining property owners that were notified. That was, of course, prior to the public hearing. Staff reports evaluated the application, and now we have staff recommendations. Those recommendations were brought forward to the planning commission, who met at noon today and made its recommendations to you. And I just wanted to, before I go over each one, we did have a comment about odor concerns at the public hearing, so I had done some research on that and looked at facilities, talked to planning staffs, and three other facilities, communities, very similar size, growing and processing facilities. One was in the suburb of Minneapolis, Cottage Grove, Minnesota, a very similar size operation. They reported to me no complaints at all about odor, and they had testing even required. But Watertown, Connecticut, also another... all three of these were separate companies, different companies, no reports or complaints about odor. And then in Simsbury, Connecticut, a similar sized city and similar size operation, both were abutting residential areas and had nonexistent complaints on odor. All of these, I think, did have ventilation systems installed, and so you'll see that in our staff recommendations. So, I just wanted to report on that research, since that was a comment at the public hearing. Special exception 03, 2019, is tax map 221-15A. Because it doesn't have a structure on it yet, it's undeveloped, we are still calling it 500 Gate City Highway. It is right there at the mall property, but just between Wendy's and the parking lot. And I don't need to go over long, because this was already presented at the public hearing, but just to remind you, the zoning in the area is B3, and there's some other zones close by, but the pharmaceutical processing being proposed is not a permitted-by-right use in B3, therefore the special exception application. This shows a footprint of the building and the size of the building proposed, and the access to it, I should say, off Gate City Highway. The proposed structure would be is three floors with a basement, so 32,400 square feet. Our evaluation, as I had gone through at the public hearing, nothing has changed on this. This is basically what we looked at and what's required by city code to be looked at on any application, so you can just go through there quickly and see. We mentioned odor and stormwater runoff needing to be addressed with it being a new building constructed, some concerns about landscape buffer and pedestrian access if parking was going to be across the private access road. So, taking those conclusions, we formulated a staff recommendation on this one to approve the special exception with conditions, and the first condition would be all state and local requirements for stormwater management and air pollution control shall be met, and adequate odor control techniques shall be utilized inside the facility to avoid off-site odors. And number two, a landscape buffer should be provided between the proposed facility and the adjacent restaurant to the satisfaction of the city engineer and city planner. And thirdly, if parking is approved for the facility across the private entrance road, that the property owner or business shall provide safe and accessible pedestrian access, including a crosswalk and sidewalk, as approved by the city engineer. This recommendation was approved by the planning commission at noon today to pass on to you all.
All right, is that it?
Yes, and you have a resolution in your packet.
Okay. So, no one signed up for public comment on this item, so...
Is there anything we can sign?
Oh, it's you again, huh? Didn't you do this... didn't you do this last meeting, too, and the meeting before the...
Hi.
Yes, go ahead. You can come up. You want to speak on this item?
Yes.
I will write your name on the list.
Do you think that's the only thing she'll want to speak on tonight?
That's the only thing we'll let her on this item.
Also, I'll be on the list to write your name on.
I'm coming down here too much. I can see that. I can... Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I'm not completely convinced, at this point, that the economy of my hometown, Bristol, Virginia, should be based on a casino and a manufacturing of a drug that is illegal in most states. I know that there are restrictions in place, but I also know that in this city, as I speak, there are at least one or two businesses that I can account to tonight that have not been forced to meet the requirements. It does happen. Now, you can say all you want to about restrictions in environmental quality and restrictions in buildings and so forth, and I know about the white pine trees spaced eight feet apart. I've been hearing that for 40 years. That's nothing new. I've already been through all this stuff many times. It's yours first, it's my umpteenth. But I'm not convinced, at this point, that either a casino or a drug manufacturer of a drug that is illegal in most states at this time is really what we need to base our economy on. We don't have any money. We don't have any money. I know that, but I know there are worse things than what we may be facing right now. I would ask you to please give this further thought. Be very careful, fellas. What are you willing to give up in order to get something else? Whose back is going to carry the load? Whose back is going to carry the load?
Thank you. All right, with that, reading of the resolution.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia granting a special exception, SE number 03-2019 to map parcel number 22-1-15A, known as 500 Gate City Highway in Bristol, Virginia, to allow a pharmaceutical processing operation. Section 1, the city council finds that whereas the community development department received an application for a special exception from Par Ventures Incorporated for the operation of a pharmaceutical processing operation at 500 Gate City Highway, Suite 1007, map parcel number 22-1-15A, and whereas the applicant submitted the required application to the director of community development in accordance with city code, and whereas the planning commission of Bristol, Virginia recommended forwarding special exception number 03-2019 for a joint public hearing with city council, and whereas the joint public hearing has been properly advertised and held on April 23rd, 2019, in accordance with Virginia Code Section 15.2-2204 as amended, and whereas property owners adjoining 500 Gate City Highway, Bristol, Virginia, have been properly notified pursuant to code, Virginia Code Section 15.2-2204 as amended, and whereas the city council of Bristol, Virginia reserves unto itself the right to grant special exception permits, and whereas the city council considered the circumstances of Bristol, Virginia, City Code Section 50-39G prior to the approval of the special exception request, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Bristol, Virginia. Section 2, special exception number 03-2019 is hereby granted with the following conditions: all state and local requirements for stormwater management and air pollution control shall be met, and adequate odor control techniques shall be utilized inside the facility to avoid off-site odors. Number 2, a landscape buffer shall be provided between the proposed facility and the adjacent restaurant to the satisfaction of the city engineer and city planner. And 3, if parking is approved for facility across the private entrance road, that the property owner or business shall provide safe and accessible pedestrian access, including a crosswalk and sidewalk, as approved by the city engineer, passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council, held on the 30th day of April, 2019.
All right, with that, what's the pledge of council?
I move that we approve the special exception with the conditions stated by staff.
A second?
Okay, you get a motion to approve of Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Farm. Any discussion?
I do have one question for Ms. Morgan. One, I'm glad to see you added the part about the adequate odor control, based on both the public hearing and the comments that we heard last year at the train station. That's good that... I was just wondering, who is... is that based on some kind of state standard, or is that up to us to enforce the adequate part, or how do we make sure that that's maintained?
That... yeah, that... not sure that would be a DEQ regulation. It would be if we had complaints from adjoining property owners, basically.
I wanted to say, I've been thinking about this for a little while, because it's been in the works for a little while. It's been on the news, in the paper. I think if you ask anyone in Bristol about what does Bristol need, the answer, more times than not, is jobs. And if you take it a step further, it goes to, well, what kind of jobs do we need? And I think a lot of people would agree, we've had a big influx of certain types of jobs, like maybe in the, I guess, the service industry, as far as restaurants and retail. So, folks would say, well, we need a different type of job. So, what's happening tonight, what we're voting on is, there is a company who's come, who has said, you know, we're going to open up shop here in Bristol, Virginia, and we're going to create jobs, good jobs. Not just about the jobs that they'll have, but their customers who will come and shop are not just going to be from Bristol, Virginia, their customers are going to be from all over southwest Virginia that'll be coming here to Bristol. So, I'm thinking we have an opportunity to market our city to people who've never been here before. While you're here, being a customer, you can also come visit our downtown and shop in our stores, and come visit our restaurants. So, I think with this business opening, it's not just going to affect the people who get jobs there and be a benefit to them, it's also going to be a benefit to other places around Bristol. So, you know, I know we talked about issues, if there would be any smell, and Ms. Morgan, thank you for working on that and contacting other localities to see what they've experienced, but I haven't been here a whole long time, sitting up here, but I was thinking back to think that, you know, I haven't been this excited to vote yes on something for a while now. So, it's exciting for Bristol, I think.
All right. Anything else? Well, I'd like to say that, you know, I received a phone call on this project, I guess probably over a year ago, or whenever it started, and I was, you know, I was listening, and I was asked the question, would I support this? And I've, you know, said like I'd normally do, if you're a good company with a good stewardship, and you're, you know, going to do things right, and you're going to make sure everything's legal and proper, and, you know, you do things well as a good community steward, I don't think you'll have any problem with some support in this community, because obviously we need jobs. So, I appreciate the partners that considered Bristol, I really do. I think they thought a long time about where to put a facility like this, because it was... that's not an easy facility to think about where to put it, because there's a lot involved with putting a new product, a new process, a new company, especially one that the state of Virginia's still got to, you know, go through the pharmaceutical approval, so a lot to that. So, they've done a fairly nice job of doing all the due diligence. There's a few issues here that they've got to pay attention to, because I think it is important for the partners of the company to, you know, understand where the public concerns are and be good stewards of what they do in the community, but as long as they do all that, which I told them I would support the project, as long as it's done right, there's no reason to hold them back, and I wish them all the success in the world. I think they've got a good group. I think the group that's with them understands what this region needs as far as economic movement, and as long as they do things right, I think it'll be a success and something we can look back on and be proud of. So, with that, any other comments?
Well, I just want to say, you know, it was mentioned today, I was talking to somebody, you know, change is difficult. People typically don't like change. But this business here, this proposal, is pharmaceutical. It just happens to be with a product that our government blacklisted many, many, many years ago. So, it threw a bad shadow over it. And I'm not a pharmacist, I'm not in the medical industry, I don't know anything about it, but I do know that all medications come from some type of plant, root, bark, bark, and things of that nature. Now, this product here has been outlawed in this country for a long time, and nobody really had the opportunity to see what kind of medical benefits that it truly does have. I mean, from what I understand, most of the information we're getting is from other countries, you know, where they was allowed to experiment with it and everything, and now, you know, we're seeing the benefits. But it's major change because of the mindset of this product. But now the state has made it legal to have pharmaceutical companies that can produce this, and we have investors, local, that's willing to put the money out to do this, and if all guidelines are followed, I see no negatives. I really see no negatives to it. It's not a drug that is going to alter somebody's mind of any way. It's been proven, from what I understand, to work unbelievably well on seizures. So, with the history that... maybe not the history, but with the experiments and results that are coming from this, we won't have all the answers of what its true capability is until we've been into this for, you know, years. But as it stands right now, it definitely is a product that is offering hope and relief for patients out there, and now the state says it's legal. So, I see no reason not to move forward on this.
I would agree with that. I mean, you know, this one thing, and first off, to kind of echo what Mayor said, what everybody's really said, I appreciate the investment in the community, these people, the partners that came together, they saw an opportunity in the change in the state law, decided to invest in our community to create good jobs, a wide diversity of jobs, and, you know, that's important for our community, but it's came out, and I appreciate the process this went through, having a public meeting at the train station last year, so the community could be more aware of what was going on, and then some of the concerns, such as the odors being addressed, so... but at the end of the day, I know, especially last year when we had that public meeting, a lot of people talked about the benefit to this, and seemed very excited about it, and I would agree, and I know there's a time limitation to get this up and going with the pharmacy board, so we need to move full steam ahead.
All right, anything else? All right, with that, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Lumpower?
Yes.
All right, on to item two. Consider resolution on special exception 04-2019 for 500 Gate City Highway, staff report.
Mayor and council members, this is, again, is the same use, just at the mall, proper proposal to put that business in the former JCPenney's building and the Eckerd Drug to the immediate right of that, and just two... there's two parcels involved, but it is 500 Gate City Highway, again, Zone B3, and this is the location that's being proposed. This is a site plan showing how it will be secured off with the fencing and parking for 116. This pink area is, give or take, 40,000 square feet on one floor. An aerial photo also showing the same with the parking designating. So, again, staff evaluation was similar to the previous one, although we did look at the fact that it's in, under the same roof in a larger building. I think the initial building official concerns have been resolved once he went over and viewed the situation, and the fire marshal has been there as well. Also, odor would be the same concerns, needing to be addressed through adequate filter and ventilation techniques. And our comment on the conclusions in the staff report had mostly to do with compatibility with the comprehensive plan, which, when it was adopted, looked at a mix of potential uses and non-retail uses in particular. And our only concern here was by doing a piecemeal use of that property instead of a one big master plan, blended uses, that we didn't want it to be a hindrance to something happening in the future, whether it be a resort casino or something else. So, that led to the recommendation that these were also considered by the planning commission and approved at their meeting today, that this particular special exception permit for this property would terminate 12 months after a written contract or agreement is signed by the property owner committing to the development of the entire mall with a master plan blend of uses, which is recommended by the city comprehensive plan. And secondarily, all state air pollution control requirements shall be met, and adequate odor control techniques shall be utilized inside the facility to avoid off-site odors. That's the re- That's the recommendation from staff as well as the planning commission.
Okay. We have one person signed up for this item, Becky Evinton.
Becky Evinton, 311 Meadow Drive. And I realize now I should have signed up under Agenda Item Number One, but bear with me. I have some positive feedback to share with you today. Last Tuesday, my husband read a suggestion from me that the city asked Dharma to provide examples of similar cannabis facilities with no odor complaints surrounding them. The reason for that suggestion was that some communities in other parts of our country are in a messy situation due to pungent nuisance odors, and I'd hate to see Bristol encounter a similar debacle. Since last Tuesday, I've been in conversation with the city planner, Sally Morgan, and I want to commend her for her follow-up on those concerns. As I understand it, Ms. Morgan knew of other cities with cannabis facilities that were very similar to Dharma's proposal, and she personally contacted those city planners. I understand that she received positive feedback from those city planners that odor is well mitigated at those facilities, such that the surrounding communities are not impacted. I am encouraged by the information she procured and impressed by her thoroughness. I'd also like to voice my support for the condition on the special exemption permits regarding odor mitigation. I am sure that the engineers at Dharma have an odor mitigation plan that they will be following for both indoors and outdoors. However, odor mitigation is a dynamic process and presumably there will be changes in staff and production scale in the coming years. My perspective is that the condition on the permits provide the city with some level of a long-term safeguard as long as there are no other, other regulatory safeguards, and it helps to maintain a symbiotic relationship between the city and the facility in the years ahead. Based on the research of our city planner, I'd like to state my support for the permits with the odor mitigation conditions included. I'd also like to thank Ms. Morgan, our city planner, for her thoroughness in investigating the odor concerns, as I know I'm not the only member of the community with these concerns. I'll be continuing to watch as this new industry unfolds in Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please read the resolution.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia granting a special exception, SC number 04 hyphen 2019 to map parcels number 22 hyphen 1 hyphen 5 and number 414 hyphen A hyphen 11 known as 500 Gate City Highway in Bristol, Virginia, to allow a pharmaceutical processing operation. Section 1, the City Council finds that whereas the Community Development Department received an application for a special exception from Dharma Pharmaceuticals LLC for the operation of a pharmaceutical processing operation at 500 Gate City Highway, map parcels numbers 22 hyphen 1 hyphen 5 and 414 hyphen A hyphen 11. And whereas the applicant submitted the required application to the Director of Community Development in accordance with City Code, and whereas the Planning Commission of Bristol, Virginia recommended forwarding special exception number 04 hyphen 2019 for a joint public hearing with City Council, and whereas the joint public hearing has been properly advertised and held on April the 23rd, 2019, in accordance with Virginia Code, Section 15.2 hyphen 2204 is amended. And whereas property owners adjoining 500 Gate City Highway Bristol, Virginia have been properly notified pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 15.2 hyphen 2204 is amended. And whereas the City Council of Bristol, Virginia reserves into itself the right to grant special exception permits, and whereas the City Council considered the circumstances of Bristol, Virginia's City Code, Section 50 hyphen 39G prior to the approval of the special exception request. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia, Section 2, Special Exception Number 04 hyphen 2019 is hereby granted with the following conditions. The special exception permit shall terminate 12 months after a written contract or agreement is signed by the property owner committing to the development of the entire mall with a master plan blend of uses as recommended by the city comprehensive plan. And 2, all state air pollution control requirements shall be met and adequate odor control techniques shall be utilized inside the facility to avoid off-site odors. Passed and adopted by the City Council, the City of Bristol, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council held on the 30th day of April, 2019.
All right, on that resolution, what's the pleasure, council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved to approve by Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item three. Consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance 19 dash 4 to amend the appendix to chapter 70, solid waste fees. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the second reading of the ordinance in regards to the collection fees and other fees associated with the solid waste disposal fund. The first reading of the ordinance occurred last week on April the 23rd, 2019, and tonight is the second reading of that ordinance.
All right, no one signed up for item three? What's the pledge of council on a motion on this second reading?
I'd move for a second reading, the ordinance by caption only.
Can I get a motion, Mr. Osborne, to approve by caption only?
A second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. Okay, any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Mumpower?
No.
All right, reading of the ordinance by caption only?
An ordinance to repeal and reenact the appendix to chapter 70 of the City Code.
Any other motion and second for adoption?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Hartley. Any discussion?
We already, we heard some public comment already earlier about, about this, what this is doing to the trash rate. This is a tough situation, this really is. Nobody likes it any when a fee or a tax or a service charge or what have you goes up. I think it's very important for everyone in the city to really understand what the current situation is that we're facing. So the current landfill that we have, there's about $35 million worth of debt that we have from it. To give you a better idea, the city has about $110 million of debt. So 35 is from the landfill, there's approximately 50 from the falls, give or take. So, so those two, 85 million together, those two decisions, to go into a retail development and to operate a landfill, those two decisions really changed the course of Bristol for a long time. So, so there's the, the debt that we have, there's also costs to operate the landfill. So there's, for instance, the liner material that we have to buy, which is pretty expensive, and we have to continue to buy it every so many years. And then we also have costs which could be around, somewhere around $19 million at the end to close the landfill properly. So we have millions of dollars that we've already borrowed, millions of dollars that it costs to operate the landfill, millions of dollars that we will need in the future. So I sort of relate it to, you know, if you have a car, if you drive, you know, you borrowed money to finance that car and you're making a car payment, then you have expenses while you own it, such as gas, and you may have to buy new tires. And then you may have bigger expenses at the end if you have a, a large maintenance issue or you have to buy another car at some point. So if you don't save the money properly that you know you need to use, it could turn out really bad. And that's basically what the city hasn't done for the past two decades, being able to properly allocate and save the money for certain things. So this is a tough decision and, and we've talked a lot about it since I've been sitting up here. I really do feel like, like this council up here, these folks are the guys that, that really will put in the time, put in the hours, put in the meetings to try to make the tough decisions. So we don't do what other councils in the past have done, which is basically kick the can down the road. And my thoughts are, if we don't do anything, kick the can down the road, we're going to revisit this in a year or two years, and the problem's going to be even worse. So there have been some people who've talked about, you know, what if I can't pay this increase? So I think it's really important for everyone to know, because I spoke with someone yesterday who didn't know about this, maybe a lot of people don't know, we do have a program where if, if there is an affordability issue, and I'd like to ask the city manager if we could have some clarification on that. I don't know all the parameters of it, if it's based on your age, like if you're a senior citizen, or your income about applying to have a, a little bit of a discount on that rate.
Sure. It's Code Section 70 hyphen 38 in the City Code. Let me get that pulled up here real quick. The issue with that Code Section had, and in my next presentation, you'll see that we're going to fix that. One of the ordinances that the city relied upon was repealed back in 2011. And, let's see, oops.
I put you on the spot.
Sure, no. Well, maybe, now I've lost my Code Section. 70 hyphen 8, sorry. 70 hyphen 38, something else. So under our current Code Section, under 70 hyphen 8, there is an exemption for elderly persons and disabled persons, which states solid waste user fee relief shall be provided to property owners at least age 65's age or anyone found to be permanently or totally disabled, as defined by Code of Virginia 58.1 hyphen 3217, provided the applicant's income meets the restrictions and conditions imposed on the income criteria set forth in Section 58.1 hyphen 3211. Well, 58.1 hyphen 3211 was repealed in 2011. So actually, that Code Section has not been in effect for eight years now. I noticed this within the past three weeks. I had a conversation with Commissioner Revenue, and I know based on conversations that we've had in this chamber and also in two-on-twos that we need to address that issue. And you'll see in my next, in the presentation following, that what I plan on doing is tying our income base to the federal poverty level. And it seems like on the research that I've done, a lot of the programs base things either at the 100, 133% or 138% of the federal poverty level, and then it continues to increase as well. So you'll see my recommendation states that we should follow the federal poverty level. That way, we don't have to deal with this in the future. We know what the federal poverty level is, and we index it probably at the 133 or 138% of federal poverty, depending on the number of individuals in the home.
So it's definitely a tough situation that we're in, and I spoke with someone the other day who lives out in the county, and they have a private company that comes to pick up their trash. They pick up one can a week and they pay about $27 a month. So we'd be a little higher, we'd be at $33. But I, I still do believe that the city does provide a high level of service still because we don't just pick up one can a month. If you have one can, we pick that up once a week. We also go out, we pick up your leaves, your grass clippings, and we do bulk pickup. So if you have a couch or hot water heater or something you set out there, so, so the city does still provide a high level of service for about a dollar a day, what it comes down to. But again, it's a, it's a tough situation we're in overall when you think about not just our expenses for collecting the trash, but our expenses for operating the landfill. So that's kind of where we're at.
So I do appreciate, kind of like you said, I spoke with several people yesterday, and I think at least one of them is here. Thank you for coming. Spoke with several people yesterday about the trash. And kind of like I told everyone that I talked to, it's, it's, it's no fun. I don't like paying it either. It's a bad situation, but it's kind of the situation that we've found ourselves in. And kind of like I said last week, sometimes you have to take decisive action to fix something. And that's what we have to do here. I talked with a lot of folks about the exceptions you can get with Commissioner Revenue's office and how to go down that route, and I hope that people have been able to do that, talk with them. Again, nobody, nobody likes it, and I hate that we have to do it, but it is something we have to do. And I know there've been some other proposals about maybe we do this, and we don't take commercial haulers, we don't do this or that, you know, and, and any of those other proposals, you kind of get, you know, they sound good on, on the top, and then you get down into them and, you know, there's a problem. So this seems to be the best way forward, you know, best way to do it in a responsible manner. And I do appreciate, you know, we're going to discuss it later, as the city manager alluded to, there are a lot of other things in the, in the way we pick up trash, the way we pick up leaves and bulk items and stuff that need to be addressed, and the vice mayor talked a lot about it. And I think one thing we were able to fix just immediately is the tire size. So I appreciate that we'll be able to discuss that. So again, I, I think this, this 33 is the, it's unfortunate, but it's really the most responsible way to move forward.
Again, as we've discussed, and we've discussed this, excuse me, a lot, but I think 33 puts us at a place that not only, it allows us to meet both the, the operating costs, but it, but to set aside what we need to start accruing in terms of our debt, in terms of the liner, in terms of our liabilities. And that's really what's been lacking. And when we had the range of proposals up there, I think this was the one that seemed to, to come the closest to, to getting us on the right path. I'm glad, as I mentioned at the last meeting, mentioned the same thing Councilman Farman mentioned about the discount for senior citizens, and mentioned that we need to look at that. So I'm glad that's an item coming up because a lot of the calls that I got, people I've talked to, mentioned that about they're, they're either senior citizens or disabled, and I don't think they even know such program exists currently. And the ones that do said they looked into it and based on whatever the restrictions was, it was way too restrictive. So, you know, we need to, to change that and make it more fair and equitable. And then kind of as, as Councilman Osborne mentioned, I had a couple of comments based on the article in the paper, looking at the different options. And I know, you know, one of the things we need to do going forward is to look at the fixed and variable cost to, to the landfill, because that's where, you know, taking commercial haulers or not or whatever. But I know that was discussed at one workshop and the, the, to not, to just take city-only trash, I think was over, well over $50. So, you know, some of these options aren't very good either. So, you know, it's a tough choice, but I think it'll put us along the right path going forward.
Well... Before we start, do you have something else?
I was just going to add, real quick, I didn't want to interrupt, but what you had mentioned about, about being fair, we had talked about it before, how it's sort of a blanket, flat rate for everybody across the board. And we talked, well, is that really fair? Some people have more trash than others, some people may live in a townhouse or an apartment and may not have any grass or leaves to be picked up. So I, I believe, is it my understanding, in this year's budget, we'll also be doing, looking more at a rate study to try to understand and try to customize a little bit where, where maybe it can help some folks as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I've stated before that everybody knows that the rates have to go up because the debt has to be paid. But there's a lot of issues related to this landfill that is not going to be fixed overnight in a year or two. And even with this $33 a month increase, this city is still going to pull money out of the general fund to subsidize this landfill. 33 is not sufficient, so it's still coming out. So now, we're a little city here that has one of the highest tax rates on real estate for the size that we are, the jobs that we have, the household incomes. We have got to look at the whole big picture, and we've got to come up with a better way to provide the services and deal with the debt. And Mr. Mumpower made a comment the last time we met, you know, it was proposed to have a committee put together to try to put their heads on, and eyes on this landfill. There is a better way to do this. $33 a month, right now, 50% increase is too much, too quick. And we still have no master plan dealing with the haulers and the rate at which that landfill is being consumed. And that $2 million liner that has to be bought every two to three years. So we want to talk about this for a couple of weeks a year. When this issue is so big, it needs to be on the table year-round. And everybody having their eyes on it and thinking... their eyes on it and thinking about this, and coming up with better solutions than just hitting everybody with a fifty percent rate increase, and business goes on as usual. That's not the easy thing, that's not the hard thing to do, in my opinion. That's the easiest thing to do. The hard thing to do is really get down into the detail of it. What are the real issues? And we know what it is. It's the debt. And then, the second issue is the subsidizing, that the rate payers are subsidizing haulers. That's an issue. Now, Mr. Mumpower and I, and a few more, met several times trying to get our heads wrapped around this, and then budget cycle kicked in and everything else, so we haven't got together on it again. But decisions like, quick decisions like this is part of what's got us where we're at. Not putting the time and effort of everybody talking and working together, trying to figure out something. Now, I have proposed, and I've showed it to the city manager, and need to meet with the rest of the council, but there is a way to get this trash rate city-only in the next year or two, because the general fund is subsidizing it right now, even with this And with the way that the laws are and the codes written and everything else, it's supposed to be self-sustaining. We can get it there. We can get it there. But we got to keep talking about it, got to keep working towards it. But fifty percent, it's too much, too quick, when you're still subsidizing everybody else, and we just took a bite out of it. But it's a bite that really affects the community in a major way. A fifty percent increase on anything is huge in one year. And it wasn't too many years ago, we was at twelve dollars.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, I know we had been at a static rate for a very long time, because nobody raised the rates. I think it was ninety-eight to two thousand and nine. Just since I've been on here, we have spent untold hours talking about the landfill, you know, at least since, we started talking, I started talking about this at length when I got elected. And at least since January, we've spent untold hours on it. And I, you all can correct me if I'm wrong, because I just got here in July. I'm sure this was brought up when you all raised the trash rates last year, you know? So, I mean, the problem has been known. And I mean, the twenty-two did a little bit to address it, but it didn't go a long way. And I don't think, just from my math, I don't know that getting city-only trash is going to be awesome either. I mean, it's going to raise the trash rate significantly from thirty-three, if I'm correct. Is that right?
Oh, yeah. It definitely has to go up. But here's the thing...
But I mean, it would go up from thirty-three.
What's that?
It would go up from thirty-three if we did city-only trash, because...
Yeah, it would have to go up.
Even though we're taking in other people's trash, they're basically, they're funding a lot of our expenses.
Yeah, but when you take the math of a nineteen million dollar closure that has to be met over the next twenty-seven years at the rate that we're filling it up right now, and you extend that out for a hundred and fifty to two hundred years, that's a big change right there.
And I don't, I don't know that a hundred and fifty, two hundred years is fully accurate. I don't, I've heard that number, but how are we going to know? And I mean, and even though...
When you go from hundred percent down to five percent...
Yeah.
That's what this city's putting in that landfill right now, is five percent. The other ninety-five percent is coming from haulers and city businesses.
We realize, we'll still have the operating costs, we'll still have the debt payment...
I understand that.
We'll still have all these other things. So, it's not, you know, if my math is right, it's going to be like fifty bucks a month.
It's going to be close to that. But here's the thing, I would make a proposal that since where this city is subsidizing, the general fund is subsidizing the landfill, and we're at a real high tax rate on our personal property, there is no reason why we can't give the homeowners a reduction on their private property, on their real estate taxes, and cut that back and offset the trash going up.
I think you...
Do you want to go?
I was going to say, I think you hit the nail on the head where you said, so people know, even with the rate being thirty-three, there's still money going from the general fund, which is like the city checking account, over to the landfill account for it to basically break even. But what I was going to say is, I think you hit the nail on the head where we do have to make sure we have a commitment, all of us, to continue to work on this, to continue to try to figure out some kind of creative solution, because like you said, it wasn't an issue that just came up this year. This has been an issue, and the landfill's been losing money for two decades. And sometimes it seems like, well, city council brings up something, they talk about it, they vote on it, and it's done. This is something that we definitely still need to talk about constantly, to try to figure out some creative solutions to figure it out.
But one of the things that I think's a little bit different, because over, you know, since I've been on council, I think, I know we raised it last year, and I think one time before, is this time we actually had the study and brought in the engineers that looked at things. We've talked about doing a rate study to try to make the rates fair, you know, to the point of city-only trash. I mean, that, that's some kind of, somebody that can look at, and the fixed costs are pretty easy. You know what your debt is, what your liabilities are, but it's those variable costs, because that's where, you know, how much, there's a certain amount of cost that you're going to have to operate that landfill regardless of what goes in there. Then, it's going to increase the more trash you put in there. And that's really, when we were going through that workshop, to me, that's probably the next thing, piece that we really need to understand before we can make any kind of decisions. Because until you see how that plays out, then I don't think you can, you know, you don't really have a good sense, handle on what it is. So, you know, we are looking at things, getting actual experts, people that understand this issue to come in and look and give us some guidance. So, I think, you know, we're getting better in the process, but, you know, and that's where, you know, talking all year long, you have the experts go out and look over the summer, we can start talking in the fall, so that, you know, we can have some sense of where we're at before we get into the budget, not just start talking in March and trying to work it out by May. I mean, so, I think we are doing some of that. Of course, it could always be better. I'm not going to say it couldn't.
I think for everyone, for anyone who was not here on the night of January eighth, I believe, was when those engineers that you talked about, Mr. Hartley, gave their big report. They had studied the landfill for the previous, maybe nine or ten months, it seemed like. And there was one gentleman who had been studying landfills for pretty much my whole life. So, they gave us a whole host of options and things to look at. So, I do feel like we up here have done more with trying to figure it out than previous councils in the past, at least.
And SCS's option, I believe their recommended number, correct me if I'm wrong, was forty-four dollars a month, which I think we all agreed was just too much. So, I mean, they were looking to be even more aggressive than we've chosen to go. This was, this is a compromise from where they wanted us to be.
I think we all want to try to figure it out, so we can have enough money to pay the expenses, but we also want to try to figure out how to keep the rate where it's not going up even more after this, because some of those other numbers that have been thrown out are kind of scary.
You know, this is going to be a discussion next year. Rates have to go up again at some point in time, because this thirty-three doesn't sustain that landfill.
I agree, and that's honest.
So, we're creeping this thing up, and it's going to keep creeping up. The problem with me is it's being filled up too quick on the backs of this city, and we have got to fix that.
Now, if they had, if they had, if they had put in inflationary increases back in ninety-eight or ninety-nine, or whenever this started...
Yeah, but that's water under the bridge. If they had not bought the landfill and done this, we wouldn't be talking about it. If they had done what they should have done, we would be a strong little community. We cannot go back. The water's done, past the bridge. We've got to fix it moving forward.
Uh-huh, absolutely. And why would we not take a step in the right direction to fix it?
We have to go up. We all know that. But fifty percent is too much, too quick.
I respectfully disagree with you. I mean, I think forty-four was too much. I think doubling it was too much. And like I said, no one wants to pay this thirty-three. But it's, I think, the most responsible of the options that we had.
I think since we've been talking about the trash that goes in the landfill, some of it is ours, a lot of it are outside companies that come in and pay us money, that are our customers, and they put their trash in the landfill, I do think we do need to really analyze, you know, if that's the option to say we don't want any more of those customers, and it's only the city trash going in, if that rate is still around in the thirty range, maybe that makes sense, because that's where we'll, you know, looking at this year for this year's budget. But if that rate, to get rid of all the commercial contracts, if that makes the rate up around fifty, fifty-one dollars or so, I think that's unsustainable for the residents.
I doubt that anybody out here in this audience would want, you know, maybe it's a moral victory if we just have only city trash, but I don't think anybody out here wants to pay fifty-one dollars a month.
Oh, yeah.
I can guarantee you that nobody here is going to jump up and down and clap for that.
Ms. Hunt out here has already established tonight that she's going to be paying forty-nine, fifty. She's not happy about it, and I wanted to discuss that, too. Did we have a policy in place at one time that they could buy the can and we wouldn't charge extra to pick it up? Or did we sell a bunch of cans with the promise we'd pick them up?
She would probably know better than I do, but...
Renee Hunt, twenty Jackson Lane. When I purchased my second can from the city and had to go pick it up myself, it was fifty dollars. They never said anything about it ever costing extra, not a dollar more to pick up the second side by side. Never was that what I told her.
How long have you had that can?
I've had that can about four years or so.
Does it have property of Bristol, Virginia on it?
And it's smaller, and it, yes. And it is smaller than the original can. You don't get the same size. It's smaller. But for forty-nine, fifty, just put me a trash dumpster up on my hill. I'll pay forty-nine, fifty for a dumpster, but for forty-nine, twenty-two dollars to forty-nine, fifty? I mean, come on, guys. Listen to your people. That's too much. I can't do that. That's more than, what, double and a half?
All right, let me, let me step in here and add a little bit to the discussion. I'm going to try to keep my cool tonight. I said my piece last meeting, and I made it pretty known where I stood on this, right? So, there's a lot wrong with this resolution. There's a lot wrong with this. The first thing that's wrong with it is we're trying to make what we think is a responsible decision before we've really studied the problem in the depth and detail that we need to study.
Yes, sir.
Okay? That's the biggest issue here. So, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to put a strong committee together with some real good experts, people that are qualified in Six Sigma Black Belt stuff, right? That really studies complex issues to see what all of the options are. Because we've talked about a couple of options. And those options that I mentioned, like the ninety percent of the trash that's going in the dump are coming from outside the city, right? If we cut that out and city-only trash, that's obvious when you look at it on the surface. That's got to be really studied, very significantly, because you can't make an assumption that ninety percent of the trash goes down, and the costs don't go down by seventy or eighty percent, too. A lot of people will say that, but you got to get in and prove that's true, which means you got to really get in there and really, really study that in detail to convince yourself you're either right or you're wrong, right? Before you say, "That's a solution." So, there's a ton of solutions, and we've kind of danced around several of them. I've mentioned a co-op. We have not even talked about having a potential partner, like Bristol, Tennessee, as an example. We've got a water sewer plant down there that we're already a partner on, right? We, we and Bristol, Tennessee are together in Washington County, moving water and sewer down common pipes to one sewer plant. We have a board of directors down there. We manage that as one partnership. Well, that model works. So, why don't we study whether a model would work like that on a co-op for trash collection and disposal, right? Where we have a joint co-op, where we work together to figure out how to go forward. Now, when we do that, we can't put our debt burden and our bad decisions in the past on anybody. That's on us. So, that thirty-five million, they didn't cause it, whoever the partners want to help us, that's on us. So, we've got to deal with that thirty-five million, no matter what we do in the future. That's sunk cost. That won't go away. It is what it is. What we can do is study the problem in a lot of detail, so that we don't continue to add to that debt issue. So, going to thirty-three dollars continues to add to the debt issue, right? It continues to add a significant amount of money to the city's overall debt, because you're still having to put a liner in way too often, right? Because of all the, of all the trash that's coming in here that's not generated inside the city. So, until those people that are bringing trash in here that aren't citizens start to pay what the rate should be, right, for bringing that trash in, which helps to subsidize and pay for that capital liner and all that cost, right? So, now you've got a market situation, because those are all customers, those are all market customers. They could say, "I'm sorry, we're going somewhere else." They could say that, you know? They could all go away. Half of them could go away. So, we don't know setting here, until we really study that from a business standpoint, how that would pan out, you know? Who would stay with us at what rate? Who would go away, right? So, that's the same thing you have to decide in business. We've got a price that's here, but it needs to be up here, because there's a lot of places that charge a lot more price. So, where is that? Well, you won't know that until you really, really study this situation. And we've just barely started scratching the surface, right? So, what's wrong about us saying yes to this is to put an additional financial burden on the citizens when we have the responsibility as a council to study this in the necessary detail to do the proper and right thing for the long term. We can't just Band-Aid this and see where we go just based on what we feel is right. So, it's okay to go to what you know is the economic inflation rate of where you should be today, based on you didn't charge anything for ten years. That's easy. But going above that, and knowing you're subsidizing other people coming in here and bringing trash in, it's one, not right. It's absolutely wrong for the citizens to have to do that. And that's what this council needs to understand. And it's our job to sit down and study this. Now, we may come back to the same answer. You may come back to the same answer, but you still have to give it a full court press and study this like there's no tomorrow, till we convince ourselves beyond a shadow of a doubt, there's only one path forward, and that's the fifty dollars or whatever got thrown out. Because I'm sitting here, I'm not convinced of that. I'm absolutely not convinced at all, right, that that's the right. Because I've seen too many other things that haven't been talked about, too many other paths to talk about to go forward. So, you got to be really careful changing a financial situation, like raising rates like this too dramatically, when you haven't done your job, right? That's my problem with this. So, like I said before, I'm a no vote, and that's really why. Because there's more needs to be looked at. Now, everybody needs to understand, the rates are going to go up.
Yes.
But we have to be reasonable. We have to make sure we understand how they're going up, fair about it, fair between citizens and businesses, and fair between people that aren't inside the city limits, that are bringing their product in here. And it's really easy to know, this is, this is way more than a hundred-year landfill without the haulers coming in here. If you go out there, you can physically see the geometry of how full that landfill is, and you know it's been in operation for twenty years. And our intake has been about the same over the last twenty years. So, all you got to do is say, you take ninety percent of that intake away, and all of a sudden, that twenty-seven-year landfill turns into over a two-hundred-year landfill, right? The numbers are there. There is no doubt about it, right? So, we can go back and look at that and calculate that, but the numbers are there. And the engineering firm that everybody talks about, they said it's a twenty-seven-year landfill at the current rates, which we know what the current tonnage is going in there, which makes it a twenty-seven-year rate. So, they validated the numbers. So, you pull out ninety percent of that, right, and you just recalculate based on their numbers, and it turns into several decades, I mean, several centuries of a landfill. That's what it is, right? So, and so we can debate that all day long. But the point is, we've got a responsibility to study that. We have a responsibility to this community, as voted elected officials, to study this in the necessary detail before we put a financial burden on this community. And now we find out tonight that we have a charter, or, you know, a city code that doesn't necessarily now allow someone that's got a financial situation or an elderly to come in and do something about it. So, that, that makes it wrong, too. come in and do something about it. So that makes it wrong, too. Now, we're not giving them even an avenue to deal with this until we do our job and fix that. So my recommendation is, we say no to this, and we continue to figure out where we need to go with this landfill. This was the best discussion we've had on this landfill since we started opening up Pandora's Box, right? We've been talking, we opened it up like a few months ago, but this, tonight was the best discussion. Started hearing a lot of input, right? And that's how you get to a solution. You got to hear all of the input, right? Then you got to study each one of those. You can't discount anything that was said up here, because there's going to be something right about everything that was said. And then there's going to be something wrong with everything that was said. But until we get a chance to study all that, my goodness, it's not right to put the burden on these citizens. Come on, we can't do that. That's just, I can't go to bed at night saying that, say that's right. That's just not right. I'm sorry. So that's why I'm a no vote. I know it needs to go up, but there's a right way to do it, and there's a wrong way to do it. And I think what we're doing here is the wrong way to go about it.
So you made your recommendation. My recommendation is, we have got a motion and a second. I call for a vote.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
No, ma'am, not right now. Please.
Just a question about the burden, what do you think about?
We'll talk about it later, not right now. We've got another item. We're going to move on.
Counsel, as I mentioned previously, this is, when I started looking at some of the suggestions that Mr. Wingard had made over the past few weeks and maybe months now, really, we just needed to get into the details of the solid waste disposal fund ordinance. And I can honestly say, I've never seen a set of ordinances that say so much but yet say so little. This can be simplified down to where everyone can understand it. As it reads right now, you know, it's very difficult for anyone to read and understand exactly what's going on and what they are responsible for when it comes to solid waste. So, Jean, if you could just turn, I think it's page four, yeah, they highlighted it there. All right, you go back, you're fine. These are some of the notes I've made over the past week, and some of the ordinances that just glare at me that need to be changed. I know Wallace has worked on this. We've worked on it in conjunction, so I may not have highlighted everything that he has talked about, but we're working on that. Uncovered vehicles, you know, it shall be unlawful for a person, a responsible person to operate a transporting waste materials within the city unless the waste is completely containerized to prevent the escape of litter, liquids, or odors. My question was, you can see in red, how do we enforce it? And typically, the answer has been the state troopers enforce this. So that's something that we leave to the state troopers. If you go on over to the next page, reporting of recycling activities, just based on my limited knowledge of what's required by DEQ, we have to report recycling, so at this point, I would leave this code section alone, maybe change the wording here or there. The following section, the exemption for elderly and disabled people. This is a code section that I referenced earlier. You can see in red, I said this ordinance needs to include a reference to the federal poverty level. I'm unsure if we should have the age limitation, because we're an older community, and this could have some negative impacts on everyone involved in regards to age and income. So we need to look at that, and I think we'll have this adjusted to the federal poverty level. And you'll see that completely rewarded. The following page, this here, I mean, when I read it the first time, you know, it was just very difficult to understand. I had to read it two or three times to actually understand exactly what it's saying. I've tasked Wallace with coming up with what we call plain English when I started law school in '04. They were going through a transition when you're writing ordinances and when you're just writing in general, to make things in plain English so that people can understand it. While this is in plain English, there's just so much, it's very difficult to understand. So we're going to pare this down so that people know exactly what their waste receptacle is, what containers are required, and what they need to do with it, and when they need to do it. You can go ahead and change the page again. That code section goes on. You can see in red, I've put, I've never seen an ordinance that says so much but yet so little. The next code section, blockages of storm drains, this is a problem. We see it all the time. Mr. Wingard's mentioned it for years. I noticed it, I noticed it all the time, but I really paid attention to it. One day last week, I was driving down Newquid Avenue, it was raining, and several people, I guess, had mowed their yard and had put the grass on the pavement, which is not where it's supposed to be, because it gets washed into our storm drains and causes issues in our storm drains. So we have to find a way to deal with that issue. There are lots of places in the city, though, unfortunately, that they don't have a place to put it, except in the road, due to the topography of their yard and the ability for our trucks to get to it. But that's something we're going to look at as well. You go to the next page. Construction, demolition, debris waste, this is something that we have talked about on numerous occasions. How can we police what's demolition debris, what is contractor debris? We're working on some solutions for that in order to bring these back before you all. Household furniture, you know, what blows my mind is, we are picking up couches, refrigerators, all these big-ticket items, and yet we had an incident within the past month where there were four or five stacks of two-by-fours and things of that nature, and we wouldn't pick it up, because it was considered demolition. We have to clean that up as a city. We've got to be fair to the residents so that they know what they can put out, what they can't put out, and then what if they do put out, they may have to pay an extra charge for. And every bit of this is just so convoluted, it's very difficult for anyone to understand as to what they would be responsible for. You can flip on over to the next page, Jean. Once again, this talks about leaves, tree trimmings, bulk wood waste. We're going to clean that up so that people know when to put things out. We have a lot of complaints on a yearly basis, simply because when the vacuum truck goes by to pick up the leaves or the grass, they may have mowed on Monday, but their route doesn't run until Friday. So all of a sudden, you've got leaves and grass sitting out for a week, and if it rains in between, it's going to get washed. It just looks bad. So we have to figure out a better way to police that so that everyone knows when to put their grass out. And it's going to be difficult. I'm not going to sit here and say it's not, because I'm not going to mow my yard simply on Thursday, because I know my grass is going to get picked up on Friday. So we have to figure out a better way to do that. Collection fees, we've already talked about. And I think that those are the main things that I've seen and that we're going over. I'm going to present these to council within the next two weeks at the May 14th meeting for these ordinance changes, so that we can start making the changes that everybody up here knows we need to make. And it's just, what we have to do is make ourselves do it. And this is just requiring, making us sit down, doing it, and fixing what needs to be fixed. So, but that's all, any comments?
So it's an open discussion, so any comments or discussion or questions for city manager?
Thank you for working on this and putting in the time on it. I know that a lot of these things have been a concern, that Mr. Wingard's raised a lot, and I'm glad you're addressing some of them, because a lot of them are just outdated rules, like you've said. And it's going to be nice to get it cleaned up and get it, get it all on board where everybody understands what we're doing. So thank you.
Well, is your intention on the 14th of May to have something presentable so that we can have a public hearing on the ordinance?
I want to be able to have a public hearing at that time on the 14th of May. We may or may not get there, because what I want to do, I want to get a draft out to you all within the next week to ten days, probably within the next week, for advertising purposes, so that I can maybe get some comments back and get your all's thoughts. So it may have to be pushed off to the May 28th, but what I do want to do is get this done as soon as possible. You know, one issue that's been brought up, if you look under one of our code sections in the city, I think it's seventy-eight hyphen thirty-three, there's a May 1st deadline for individuals applying for, you know, a reduced rate and reduced real estate taxes. I'm not as concerned about the real estate tax issue because of when things are due, but I think the commissioner's office, no fault of her own, was also following that same May 1st deadline for reduced rates in trash. Now, my opinion is, if there's an individual, an elderly couple, and one of them passes away, and so their income's being reduced, their trash is being reduced, and they pass away in August, there's no reason as a city that we shouldn't be allowing someone who has a change in circumstances to come to the city in August and say, you know, this is what's happened to me. My income's been reduced. I now meet these threshold limits. I'd like to reduce rates. So there's no reason to put a time limit on that. I don't think that does a service to anybody. And we have to be willing to open that door to make that. That's just one change I know that's been brought up quite a bit with people that I've talked to in regards to the rates.
I think that makes a lot of sense to say. The word you used as far as cleaning it up, making it easier to understand, I think if there's anyone qualified to go through wording like this, line by line, and really understand it and try to make it easier to understand, it's an attorney.
Or Mark Pollard, he's the author of our...
That's who came to my mind.
I was going to say, our city manager happens to be an attorney. So I appreciate your time putting in that to try to...
Well, it's not on me. I mean, you know, Wallace has looked at it, Mike Martin, Sam Hess. So I mean, it's a team effort to come up with this, so that we're all on the same page. I don't want to make a suggestion that's not going to work for them, and they don't want to make a suggestion that's not going to work for the city and for council. So we're working on it together, and we're going to try to have something to you sooner rather than later.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'm glad to see that we're looking at this, because it's definitely way out of date. Things have changed. So, but it just goes to show, you know, just sheds light on, the way government does business needs to be looked at.
I'll tell you one thing...
More often than what we've looked at things as a community here.
One thing I've learned in this position is, all because you set a ordinance or a rule or a standard at some point in the past does not mean that always needs to be the ordinance, the rule, or the standard. You have to continue on a daily basis to improve upon what you have, make the changes that some people may not agree with, make the changes that others may agree with. As a city, we continue to grow. As employees, we try to figure out what we need to do to make things work better. And this is just one of those things that's glaring us all in the face right now, so let's fix it now while it's on everybody's mind. And it's something we need to revisit, probably every two years. It's just like our fleet vehicles. There's something that we, these are things that we need to continue to do on a regular rotational basis so that things do not get so out of kilter that you're making so many changes all at one time. I mean, what you're going to see here is probably ten or twelve ordinances changed at one time. That could have been changed periodically, and it wouldn't have gotten to the point that it's in right now. And that's nobody's fault, fault in the past. I'm not saying it's anybody's fault. It's just, I think, as community leaders, we're starting to learn that a city or a local government is a living organization, and we have to be able to adapt and change as it changes and deal with those changes when it happens.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll just go on in, talk about the budget discussion.
Can we take a recess?
We'll take a break. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're back from recess, so get into item five.
It's what we call a budget workshop, and tonight, you all can make recommended changes to my recommended budget. And I'll just leave it open to you all as to how you all want to proceed.
Okay. Who wants to start?
Well, for this upcoming budget that starts July 1st, and we can get into discussion about any, what changes we'd like to make, we'd like to see, but I think it's important to highlight some of the good things that are going on. And correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but my understanding in this budget is the real estate taxes are not going up. It's a balanced budget. We're able to make all of our debt payments, and every city employee is getting a three percent raise.
That's correct, as long as you all pass it.
So let me just kind of run through my highlights in the budget real quick. And you kind of hit on a couple of them. So we're continuing our stated policy of setting money aside for our debt, for our debt reserves, which is great. We got our first substantial pay raise for city employees in several years. We're fully funding our police and firefighters and allowing them to fill the vacancies that they have. We've got an increase in funding now to market the city and to grow our tax revenues through the CPB. And we've got a capital improvement plan in place to begin addressing our fleet vehicle needs. So I think we've got a lot of, a lot of good in the budget. One thing that kind of concerned me at the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you said this, when you were talking about the budget, you said we were taking two steps back. And so these are, these are the big changes I found in the budget. So which of these are the two steps back?
Well, from my standpoint, the big things that I see when I look at the budget, one, we spend a lot of time and effort to say, you know, the city's not in a position financially to increase headcount and organizational staffing. We'd like to, but we're just not in that position. So when you look at this budget, there's an increase in headcount and staffing. And we froze basically all staffing at levels two years ago to say, you know, we just can't afford to take the risk of increased staffing until we get our arms around the cost and where we're going. So when you look at this budget, you know, it's got increased staffing and increased headcount in a lot of different areas. You mentioned one of them. So that's two steps backwards, because we're not out of the financial position that we really need to be in before we know that we're safe on all of our debt obligations and things going forward. We're exposed in this budget because we have known and unknown legal situations that we have faced, right, and stuff that may have to be faced. So we have not yet filled a city attorney or put aside the proper funds to make sure that we have coverage, right, on anything that could come up legally. I think even though the capital is being addressed, I don't think we're specific enough on the debt service, the capital, which debt service would be, making sure we're covering the falls obligations, you know, and all the debt, right, and setting up accounts to make sure they're specific to that and make sure we fund them properly. And how are we going to do that? Because we set aside monies for the reserve fund or the unassigned fund balance. And so now that we've hit our threshold, we've got, we've got an obligation to decide how, where that money goes, and how we, and how we divvy that money out. Do we put thirty percent of that extra in potential debt obligations we need to make sure of, and thirty percent for the schools, which we've all heard about, which we need to deal with on the safety and the accessibility issues? And then the other thirty percent for public safety, you know, the capital that we just need as a city. So there's kind of three big categories there that we've kind of talked about, but we've not, we've not put the, what I call the substance to it, right? You got to put some substance to that and really decide how we're going to allot the money to each of those accounts to say comfortably, we have a plan now, here it is, and now we know how we're going to fund it going forward. So I think that's, not having that in here is kind of where we were. You know, it's not really a step backwards, but we aren't stepping forward.
Let me, let me jump, let me jump back. I've got another kind of follow-up.
Okay.
Just so we're clear on where we all are with this budget. So we are increasing the headcount, and in the case of at least the public safety, it's vacancies that we had already budgeted for. And they're just, I mean, they had requested more, more staff, and we didn't, we didn't fund that. Is that correct? We didn't fund any additional staff?
The, we, there's, the headcount increased in the city by, I think, one and a quarter people, if I'm not mistaken.
The actual, and that was with some of the...
And that was the actual headcount in regards, the other positions had been budgeted. They had just been put on a freeze. And when you, when you do the math, at least into one of the departments, it appears that with two other individuals at that department, the overtime issue decreases significantly.
All right, so it ends up, the money was already there for these positions, and you end up spending less because you aren't paying somebody overtime to be time and a half to be there.
That's correct.
And so the other thing that, and this may be something more that Mr. Hartley could address, you mentioned the lack of funding for city attorney. Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it maybe last budget... me if I'm wrong, wasn't it maybe last budget cycle that you all had cut that money?
But we cut it the last two cycles.
Yeah, and it's gone now. You all, you all cut it, and that's why it's not there.
We cut it, but we cut it under the premise of we brought in a city turn, a city attorney slash, right, city manager, so we all said under that context, there was gonna be a short-term agreement that we could go forward with somebody that was dual-headed, city attorney, city manager, right, to minimize our cost, right? So, now as we sit here, we know we're facing what we faced already, and what we're potentially facing is, is more than potentially that dual-headed city manager and not having a city attorney sitting there that's, that's, you know, clearly somebody could answer from a legal standpoint, not get the city manager in a predicament where he's trying to answer it from both perspectives and switch around, which, you know, I mean, I would hate to be sitting there having to, you know, decide, you know, when and what I can say, because am I really speaking as a city manager to you, or am I speaking as a city attorney? And so, we gotta address that. So, so not having a plan in here of how we're going to address that, I think, is not what we want to do for this budget cycle.
And I mean, the cost is so, I mean, it's prohibitive at this point, you know, to bring it back, because once you fully cut something, you know, it's hard to find a place to get all that money back. I mean, that's, I don't see how we can do it. I feel comfortable with Mr. Reed serving in both roles, obviously.
Do we have the ability to, where you are sort of serving, wearing two hats, if there was a situation where there needed to be more legal advice, where we can seek outside counsel from someone else if the need arises?
Yeah, and I've done that, and it was one of the things that I brought to council's attention when I came in kind of as a dual role, that there would be instances where I would be conflicted out, and really just to protect the city, we would need outside legal advice. We've done that in several situations this year. We've spent roughly $7,000 for outside counsel this past year.
I would just say, when we voted on your contract in July, I brought that up as a concern. I mean, to me, that was a concern, it's still a concern, it's a longer-term concern, because I'm afraid more potential conflict, but also employee burnout, trying to do too much in two roles, so, you know, everybody was all right with it then, as Mr. Osborne says, you know, that's been cut and cut, so, you know, to, to try to put that back now on is, is really hard. Regarding the, the, the cut, increase, I wouldn't, I mean, the only increase, I think, is, is in IT, and that, that's probably was cut back, I think there used to be more people in that department at one time.
I, actually, I have a spreadsheet on my computer, and I meant to print it and I forgot, that shows the historical averages of all departments for the past 10 years.
But to me, the police and fire, and, and again, I've sat here for at least the last two years before saying that, you know, of all the positions that don't need to be cut, it's police and fire, public safety. I mean, we need those people. We had a packed house here two years ago, talking about reducing the fire department by 50%, we didn't do it, you know, I said at the time it was a bad idea to freeze those positions, that to me, a freeze like that is just a backdoor way of making a budget cut. If it's in the budget, we fund it, it should be funded. And so, you know, it's like, well, we'll increase overtime and cut the position. What we found is our overtime costs are much greater. If we would just, you don't, it would cut down on the overtime cost, it would help morale, it would have people that, that are there that are not overworked in, in very vital positions in the community, so I don't see that at all as a step backwards. Regarding the specific accounts, I know that, that idea has been mentioned, but there's been no discussion at all in council about what to do with that. I think the finance committee's talked a little bit about it, and to me, to divide up money and restrict it right now is probably into very restrictive accounts, would think would be, could be counterproductive, that you could have money sitting in one pot that's needed somewhere else. I'm not saying that, that it shouldn't all go into the, to the unassigned fund balance, which we met that goal, but I've used the term to some people, a rainy day fund, or however you want to call it, just a general reserve, that, you know, there, there are a lot of different scenarios that could come up, that we could use that money, and to me, to, to set aside money for the schools for some future need, when they have needs now, is, doesn't make a lot of sense either. So, you know, that's, that's a longer-term thing that I think we need to talk about, but we are continuing to set that money aside, so, you know, at, at, at the level we have been, so I think that, you know, it's there when we need it, but I don't think we need to, to start restricting it and, and putting it in a whole bunch of little restrictive pots, because once you restrict money, it, it gets very hard to, if you need it for another purpose, or to let it build up to where it can achieve its purpose. So, regarding those things, you know, I don't see this as a step backwards at all.
I think you made a good point where you said about the overtime, where the idea is if you have a few more positions in a certain department, you're paying for those positions, but current positions are not working as much overtime, so there is some savings there, and the overall idea is if there's more employees and less overtime being worked, employees are not overworked and they're well-rested, and, and I'd like to go on record saying, you know, I've heard the term since I've been sitting up here for a few months, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, that's the purpose of the city, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. So, I think we need more police officers, I think we need more firefighters, I think they need better equipment, and I think we need to pay them better.
Well, I'm gonna just chime in on that, health, safety, and well-being of the citizens. What does that consist of? To me, that consists of a healthy balance of all three, health, safety, and well-being of the cities, citizens of the city. This budget, to me, is a step back. Locality comparisons that we've done two years ago, the council that we had two years ago, made hard decisions, the chambers were full, people was just stomping, snorting, and screaming, but look at the healthy position that it helped put this city in. When I came on council, and it's, I'm not taking the credit for this, I'm just making a statement, when I came on city council, we was ranked the bottom worst locality physically stretched, strapped in the state of Virginia, and within 18 months, we pulled out of that to a healthy position. Now, what got us there? It was a tightening of the belt. It was turning the light on, telling the investors out there, we're open for business. This city has stiff-armed investors to the point they have swore us off. Well, now, they now know that we're business-friendly, so they've started coming back, and we're growing the city, and that is what we need to do. The health and safety consist of fire, police, and EMS, but at what cost? Locality comparisons that we've done was clearly visible that for our locality, location, locality with 17,000 people, we're out of tilt. So, what did we do? We froze a few positions. The fire department had their study come in here. They pretty much confirmed in that study that our fire stations are not in the right location, we shouldn't have three, we should only have two. If you do away with one, then you, you lose those firefighters. Well, we wasn't willing to do that, but there is a healthy balance. Now, you say fully funded, what is the magic number? Even though you've, even though you've hired and filled those positions, they still want more, I promise you, they want more. The police department, they want more, and that is typical of, of mankind, but abused by government. Government has a mindset that it must grow at all times regardless of what the pressure is put on the taxpayer to fund it. Now, that's well-being of the citizens. Is it the well-being of the citizens to take more money out of their pockets to fund this stuff to an excessive level? Health, safety, and well-being, these people need to put food on their table, they need to put clothes on their children's backs, shoes on their feet, and take care of their families. There is a fine line to where you have to be responsible as a community as to what you're gonna fund, how much you're gonna fund it, and so forth. Then here's what we've done in a nutshell, the two years of hard calls that this council made has all been washed away. Only time will put us back in the same position if we don't continue to keep growing this city. We've already used up all the frozen positions, we did cut the funding for the city attorney to balance the budget, but it was with the agreement that we would get it back up to where we can get that position filled. Right now, we're running without an assistant city manager, we're running without an attorney, we're running with an assistant attorney, city, city manager slash attorney, but yet we're funding the school system that has all the assistants, all, all their people are filled, okay? And I'm not saying that in a derogatory way. But this city has got to be smart on the decisions that it makes, because we're not out of the woods. We've made great strides, but we're not there. We don't need to be spending the new revenues that's coming in with the new businesses that's opening up and just burning that money and salaries and blah, blah, blah. We need to be setting it aside, because at some point in time, these people need a tax break. They're paying $1.17 on their taxes, which for localities natured like ours should be somewhere around $1.10 roughly. But do we have a master plan to get there? No, we don't, because once government gets your money, it takes an act of Congress to give it back. And I promise you, with the mindset that this council has, you will never see a refund on your, of the reduction on your, your taxes. They will figure out a way to spend it, because government will always say, I need, I need. I'm a no vote on this budget. I think it's wrong, there's a lot of good things that's happened in this city, but now we are on the path going backwards.
Mr. Wingard, I frankly take offense at your characterization of us three...
I don't care if you take offense or not.
Well, I mean, you had your time, let me finish. At your characterization here, this budget, our revenues are increasing, our revenue lines are increasing from growth, it's a balanced budget, we are hiring people to fill places that are already funded and budgeted for. I see no problem with the budget, I don't know, I don't understand, there's a disconnect, I don't understand, I listen to everything you said, I don't understand why you don't think this is a good idea. I mean, yeah, I respect your opinion, I hope you respect mine, I don't understand how you think that paying our firefighters, giving them a raise, hiring more firefighters and police to keep us safe is a bad thing. You know, maybe we have a fundamental disagreement on what government does, and apparently we do, but I don't understand.
Well, let me, let me go in here and let me, let me try to explain a couple of things. We, you do need firefighters, there's no doubt about it, because you gotta keep the citizens safe when there's a fire, and you need police, just like you need the military. But you've gotta understand, like Mr. Wingard said, what is the right balance? So, you can't just say we need more firefighters, or we need more police, or we need more parks and rec, you gotta, you gotta reconcile what is the right number for Bristol, Virginia? And like Ms. Marnie said, and I hate to give her a lot of credit, but when she comes up here and she says, folks, look, we're, we're a poor community, we're a poor community, you need to understand the reality, we are a poor community, so let's look at the numbers, okay? And I brought this up two years ago when we started looking at, at the firefighters. And I looked at these numbers not because I don't like firefighters, hell, I fought fires in the military, I know how hard it is, and I know you need them, right, I get it, but I also have been, done a lot of budgeting and know you gotta understand what's the right number, how many do you really need for a city the size of Bristol with 17,000 people? You've gotta reconcile that, because if you spend too much money there, it's money you could spend toward a school, or toward police, or something else, right? Because it's money you're, you've only got, you've only got a pool of money from taxpayers, and you've gotta divvy that money up. All right, so, I didn't know anything about firefighting numbers, so I went and I grabbed the National Fire Prevention Association data off the website, go Google it, they have studied and took national averages and surveys over 25-plus years, right, 25-plus years, every year they got the numbers. So, roughly, the average has not changed for that length of time, there's about 1.6 professional-paid firefighters for every 1,000 persons that live in a municipal area, right? 1.6, so if you take 1.6, which is the NFPA's national average, and you multiply it by 17, that says we need about 28. Well, we're talking about 44 in this budget, so there's a big discrepancy there. So, now you gotta say, why is that? So, at 44, you divide that by 17, that's 2.6 firefighters per thousand, right? Well, that's a 62% increase above the national average. Why is that? Okay? So, when you go out and start looking at why, to answer the question of why, you say, well, let's look at some cities like Bristol, let's look at Danville, let's look at Staunton, let's look at Waynesboro, let's look at Coquill, Tennessee, let's look at Joplin, Missouri, you know, look at all kinds of communities out there that are kind of small, about the same square miles, right, population about like ours, and most all of them that I've looked at, and I've looked at a number of them, not just the ones in the state of Virginia, they're all pretty close to the national average. Some might be 1.5, some might be 1.7, but, but they're not 2.5 or 3 where we are. So, something's definitely out of whack, and the only way I could reconcile it was, you know, we built an additional fire station. When we annexed the county back in the early 70s, right, we, we built a fire station up there when Vampelt, Spring Garden, Village Green, all those houses went up at, at Exit 7, right, we were putting a ton of people in the city from the county, building a lot of houses, a lot more businesses going up there, the decision was we need another fire station, and it ended up right there. So, if you look at how you gotta staff three fire stations properly, 24/7, seven days a week, right, with the number of staffing, okay, that's what drives that 40 to 42 number. You gotta have kind of that number to staff three fire stations. So, then we start asking the question, well, why do we need three fire stations? Maybe that's the problem. Well, let's get somebody to look at that, right? Let's, let's call the National, let's call the Virginia Fire Association, let them talk to us about, you know, what's the, what's the numbers, what's NFPA saying, right? So, there's lots of, there's lots of guidance out there about how long you should take to go to a fire, 240 seconds, your response time by the time the bell rings is 240 seconds to where you should have water on the fire, right? So, there's numbers out there, this has been studied for years, right? Well, when you look at where our fire stations are located, one of the obvious problems is, one of our issues is, Fire Station 1 is next to the state line. Fire Station 1 almost cuts off half of its response area, because it sits within 100 yards of the state line. That's the wrong location for Fire Station 1, right? It needs to be located up Lee Highway or up Valley Drive, because then when you look at that 240-second circle, and you take each of our fire stations and you draw a 240-second circle around it, you know what else we learned when we did that? We have a huge gap through the middle of the city. There's no fire coverage within the, within the recommended time for all those homes and people that live... and people that live up on King Mill Pike, through Kingtown, through East Valley Drive, all the way up through McChesney Heights, up through Ball Corporation, because the Fire Station up at Van Pelt's too far away, and Fire Station One's too far away, and Fire Station out at Stonewall's too far away. So there's this huge lack of coverage, and it's all because Station One sits too close to state line. So if we were to move Station One up, then we would almost have perfect coverage. The circles almost start to overlap where you can cover 92 to 94% of the city's population with two fire stations, and then now all of a sudden, two fire stations, staffing 24/7, doesn't require the 42 or 44. Actually requires about 26, 28, which is back to that national average of 1.6. So I have, I have reconciled those numbers in my head, and so until somebody shows me something else, that's, that's what it leads me back to. So that's the right number. And I need data. I need more information versus just saying, "We need more staffing or overtime," to say that's wrong. Because we've got to be guided by facts. We can't be guided by opinion. When you're guided by opinion and emotion and agendas, agendas and, and personal egos is what got this city to where it is today. That's absolutely a fact. People had a personal agenda, right? They didn't care about where it took them. They had a, they had something they were trying to show, and all of a sudden, all of a sudden, here we are with, what, $108 million worth of debt because of it, right? And so now, yeah, we've got to talk about it. Every single department which we froze is exactly what you would do if you were a business and you were at the brink of not being able to pay your bills. And if you don't think we're not at the brink, you haven't been here long enough to look at these numbers. The economy is good right now, thank God. We better hope it stays that way because that revenue line in this budget could be $3 to $4 million south of that, like that. If this economy slows down, that $54 million or $55 could turn into $50 overnight. Are we ready for that? No. That's two steps backwards. You've got to be ready for that downturn. Downturns happen about how often? Happened in '88, '90? Happened around 2000? Happened around 2008, 2010? They happen about what? You get the number, every 10 years. Where are we? All right? So they don't go, you don't go forever. Well, we're not in a position to handle a downturn right now, so we can't be spending money in this budget. We need to be saving money. We need to be taking the money and putting it somewhere, and I don't, I'm not saying we put it in a restricted account, but we need to be squirreling away our money like a squirrel, like there's no tomorrow, so that we're ready when the downturn happens so that it doesn't put this city back not on its heels, on its rear behind. Because that's what's going to happen. So then when I look at this budget, I just go to the bottom line and look at the cost expenditure side. Are we where we were two years ago? Nope. We're up. We're up significantly, right? Well, that's the wrong direction when you're a city that's in financial kind of iffy land. You should be trying to go down a little bit year over year, right? Based on efficiency improvements, staffing organizational improvements, you know, getting better at the landfill, getting better at how we, how we fight fires, getting better how we, how we go out and police things. We should see our organizational staffing get a little bit better every year, which means costs should follow that. So that's how you pay for a pay increase. You pay for a pay raise because you have become better this year than last year because you're more efficient. It's not that people are working harder. You have figured out ways to be more efficient as an organization. That's what government doesn't get. Government has never got that. Businesses have to do that to survive. But you have to do that to even pay for this 3% pay raise. So another issue here is, yeah, it's, these, these employees need a pay raise. It's way overdue. But to give them a 3% pay increase when we're going up on our expenditures way more than we should be going up is not pay, helping us pay for that pay raise, and it's putting us more in a predicament if the economy turns south on us. Because folks, it's going to happen. You've got to be really, really conservative when you're in this position. You've got to hold on to your money like there's no tomorrow. Give it up under no circumstances. Because at the end of the day, what we have to do is pay the payroll and keep the lights on and pay the bills. All the other stuff that is like to have but not must-have doesn't necessarily have to be paid. So the other thing I saw in here is we're giving more money to the outside organizations. Okay, why, why are we doing that, right? When we're in this position, we need, we need to support those organizations that are bringing value to the city. I agree with that, right? And some are doing, some are working much better at what they're doing. But you can't justify going up 100% from where we were last year. We're not in that position, folks. We're, we're not in a financial position to even be thinking that way. So we're not thinking like we're, we're in a conservative mode where we better be ready for tomorrow when, when tomorrow turns south on us. We just think everybody, everything's hunky-dory here. We've got plenty of revenues coming in from new businesses, right? And you're going to be rudely awakened when 24 months rolls by and the economy turns south and all of a sudden, that revenue's not there you thought, and then you spend an extra $2 million or $2.2 million that you didn't have to, right? And so when I say the argument of, "Don't spend $2 million on a liner if you can only spend a million," that's what I'm talking about. Don't spend more than you absolutely have to because you might need that extra million. You might absolutely need that extra million within 18 months because you don't know. You can't predict that future. And where I, and folks, we're on, we're like this. We have no margin for error. You know what I'm saying? We've gotten better, but we have zero margin for error. None. We need a lot of margin. We need like 10 to 15 to 20% margin of error. So if we miscalculate something or the economy turns south on us, we're not predicting it, we still have the means to do what we need to do to take care of the city's budgetary and public safety and education side. And this budget does not do that. This budget makes you stay up at night thinking, "Oh, my goodness, if the economy goes bad and a couple of things don't go our way, we're going to be just back where we came from." And you know, I'm way over here on the conservative side when it comes to fiscal responsibility, right? Right? And so when you're in a position the city is right now, I'm telling this council, every one of you need to be there. Because if you're not and you're wrong at what's going to happen in the future, you're going to see what's going to happen. Then you're not going to have the ability to do what the city needs to do from the financial side. And that's a responsibility of this council, to be over-conservative, to not spend the money you absolutely don't have to.
I just, I mean, spending money, when you look at this, a lot of the things we're doing are actually making investments. And that's one of the things that we sit here and talk about that hasn't been done for so long. I mean, you know, we're actually not borrowing money with the solid waste to buy a liner. We're not, we've got a capital improvement plan where we're actually starting to get on a cycle to pay for things as we go. We're investing into our employees. And when it comes to the fire department and, and, you know, we've had that discussion. I'm not going to rehash what was, was said two years ago, but that study you pointed out in eight different points in that study says, "This is prescript, this is descriptive data, not prescriptive. Do not use for staffing recommendations." And then the guy came, "And you're right. The fire stations are, they did recommend that we move Station One up, but you still need the station up near Van Pelt to service up around the golf course in that area." And you can't, you've got to, if the station out on Euclid is where it's at because of the railroad track, you couldn't move it or else the, the potential for the railroad. So, you know, longer term, yeah, we probably do need to, to look at, at moving the fire station. I don't know if that decreases. One thing that's changed, and, and you see some in the budget, is the fire department's also starting to run EMS, which brings in additional revenue. And, and so that, that's another thing. So again, they need the staff to be able to handle those duties. You mentioned the city attorney was cut to balance the budget. No, it wasn't. The budget was balanced. It was cut. That, and the CBB was cut from 100 to 50, and that was cut, and then given back to the employees as a 1% bonus during one of the workshops. The budget was already balanced, so it wasn't done to do that. I mean, you know, talking about the outside organizations, I, yeah, the CBB, it, it was cut. It was cut again, and, and I mean, we're to the point now to where I, I would recommend additional funding. I think 100 is too low. I mean, to, you know, we've got some opportunities coming up in the next year between the racetrack and Ribbon Roots, moving those two, the schedule changes around to really capitalize on, on the tourism potential in this community. But, you know, we want to continue to grow the, the revenues. We've got to continue to fund the, the CBB. Nobody else is, is marketing the community. They, we need to fund them. So I would recommend bringing that up from 100 to 125. I mean, we cut completely Ribbon Roots out, birthplace of country music, but they sit here, they're the only group that's going out and bringing tour buses in. And we say, you know, "We will fund something that's very specific, very measurable." Well, I can't think of anything that's more measurable than, than going to these bus shows and seeing how many tour buses they bring in. Yeah, you may not see, they go in January and you see the buses roll in in February. That's a long-term process, but just if they, if we spend a little bit of money and make a little bit of investment, we will see a return on that manyfold. So I would recommend giving them some funding as well because nobody else is doing that for the city. So, you know, again, you need, to me, I've always looked at this, is what are investments? What are we investing in, not just in terms of expenses? And the employees, we gave them a, a, last year, they got a 1% bonus. Again, they, you know, if you want to keep good, quality employees, you know, they got a bonus last year, but their health incre, we increased their health insurance costs. This year, it stays level. If you want to keep good people over time, you need to invest in those people. Another thing that's in this budget that, that we, was cut back, and it's good to see, is training and professional development. I mean, you can't expect people to do their jobs and stay up with certifications if they're not getting the necessary training to be able to do their jobs well. So, you know, again, to me, those things are investments in making the city, you know, if you want to be more effective and more efficient, then you have people that, that are better trained, that are doing their jobs. So that's, you know, as I look at it, I don't see this as a step back. I mean, we have made some great strides, especially over the years. I mean, you know, again, we've gotten off the tan. We've got a, a good fund balance built up to where we don't have to worry about that. We've got some additional funds that we could do something with, maybe a contingency, however you want to look at that. So, you know, we're, we're, are we there yet? No. But, but I don't think this is the gloom and doom that it was five, four or five years ago when people were looking at things. I think we're, you know, moving in the right direction. We're, we're not all the way there yet, but I think this helps make some good investments in some areas. And, you know, the one thing I wish that we could, that I don't see in this, and, and again, part of it is, when you cut things, it's hard to put back, but is, is the funding for the schools. I mean, you know, again, they, they came with two requests. One, operational, and I, I don't see, I have a hard time trying to find a recurring source of funding to give the schools. I mean, that, that would be very hard. But then they also came with that capital needs, and we still haven't really had that conversation and sat down in a joint meeting to try to figure that out. And I don't see it happening in this, necessarily in this budget cycle, but we need to. And I appreciate the folks from Virginia Organizing trying to help push that along because I think, you know, longer term, those are things that we need to, to, to look at. But unfortunately, I don't, that's not in the budget, nor do, I think we could get something probably worked out in the next few weeks for this year's budget. Anyway.
Well, it's kind of hard to do something like that when you spend the money as quick as it comes in.
I think you hit the nail on the head when you said the, the reference about tightening the belt earlier because, and I'll still say this, I'm, I'm the new guy. I've been saying it for a little while, but it seems like to me, just in the meetings I've been coming to before I was sitting up here, it seems like, like you said, over the past four or five years, it's been tough and the belt has been really tightened on the budget. And it seems to me like this year's budget, it's like we're loosening the belt just a little bit, like a notch. And I guess it's, it's up to us to really decide, you know, how much do we loosen that belt? Is it a little bit more? Is it a little bit less? Is it none at all? So, you know, since we were talking about the, the fire department, yeah, about the location of Station One down here, I'd like to definitely learn a little bit more about that. But I, I tried to really make a point when I got on the council to go to every fire station during different shifts, different days, and try to meet all the, all the folks that work over there. And it just seemed to me like all of them said that they were really overworked and with overtime, and it's tough to even try to take a day off, even if they accumulate a day off, it's tough to take it because they're short-staffed. So I, you know, the, the study where you referenced the 1.6 per thousand folks, I'd, and we're higher than that. You know, I guess I'd like to learn a little bit more about that because it seems like, hopefully with, with this now, I guess we're adding a couple folks, a couple positions that were unfilled that are being filled. I don't know if, to start in the ambulance service affects that rate about how many per thousand, but, but, and, yeah, Mr. Hartley, you just mentioned something that I was thinking about saying for a while. We, we voted no in November to consolidate our elementary schools and build one new school up at Van Pelt. So the other option was to, you know, what I had said, "Let's invest in our schools and remodel all our, all our schools. All our elementary schools need to be safe, functional, and accessible." And so I do think that we need to sit down with the school board and put our differences aside, put our heads together, and try to figure out what the best solution is going forward, whatever it may be. So.
Yeah, and I, I just kind of touched on what both of you said. We absolutely do need to get down, you know, with the school board and, and talk about where we move forward because that $14 million request was, you know, horrifying. So, I mean, tentatively, I haven't looked at my schedule, but I'm going to be at your all's form, and I would, I would hope everyone up here will be. I don't know if we will, but I, I will be there. We need to work with them. I wish we had the money to put back the $300,000, but it's just not, it's just not feasible. As far as what Mr. Hartley had said with the CBB, I wish we could get a little bit more than $100,000 on it because honestly, the people that they bring in, this is the only tax that no Bristol resident is paying. It's a lodging tax. Unless, unless you're staying in a hotel and you own a house and you just want to stay in a hotel, all this tax money that they're helping bring in is from somewhere outside of Bristol. So, I mean, we need as much as we can to focus to get more people in here in our hotels and spending money in, in Bristol because that's tax money that's not coming from us. And, and kind of like Mr. Farnham said, back with the firefighters, you know, they are overworked. They have an increased workload now with the, with the ambulance. So there's, there's no way I'd be comfortable with 28 firefighters. You know, that's just not, that, that's off the table for me, you know, as far as that goes. I'll, I'll go on the record right now and, and tell you that I wish we could have got more than 44 because these are public safety people that protect your house, protect my house. These are people, I would, I don't want them overworked. I don't want them short-staffed. I want them fully funded, and, and that's where I am on that. So, I mean, there's, there are a lot of things I'll negotiate on, but public safety is not one I'm negotiating on.
Okay, so I'll address a couple of things here. So I heard Mr. Hartley say, you know, "We, we need to make investments into the community organizations." And that's right, it is an investment. So with any investment, you're trying to understand, are you getting a return on that investment? So what I've been trying to do is challenge these organizations to show what the return on that investment is. So if we give X thousands of dollars, you know, what's coming back to the city as real tax dollars? And so we're trying to look at that. And there seems to be at this point, no real correlation between the money we cut back and the fact of what happened with those tax revenues. So now, you could argue two things. One, we haven't let it, we haven't let it go long enough. We haven't really studied it for a length of time to see what the impact is. But if you're going to invest in something and you're going to put taxpayer money at play, you need to demand a return on investment because it's taxpayer money that's going to that investment. So that investment means you're getting a return on that investment. So all I would say to Mr. Hartley is prove it. Prove it that there's a return on that investment. If you give the CBB 75,000 or 175 or 275, whatever the number is, if there's a return on that investment, that if we give them 200,000 and they return back to the city based on that 200, an additional 500,000... on that 200, an additional $500,000 of tax, and you can prove it, you're not going to get any argument out of anybody setting up here. But you know what your responsibility is? You got to prove it. You got to prove that you're getting something out of that investment. Or what you're really doing is just throwing taxpayer money out there hoping you're getting something out of it. Now, we know there's value there, so, you know, they do a good deed for the city, but you've got to really start looking hard at where you put taxpayer money. And you've got to get every ounce of return off of every dollar spent. And that's a fact. So you have to bring in more buses to bring in tourism, then show us on a financial statement the amount of increase in revenues and, and sales and tax dollars that came into this city by giving them that money. I've yet to see that because it hasn't happened. So if they do that, I'll be the first one to say, I'm wrong, and I'll give them more money. But that's their responsibility. It's not our responsibility to do that. It's our responsibility to say, if you're going to taxpayer dollar, you're going to show us what return we got on that dollar, just like any business was doing, just like you would do if you invested your money with a bank or anything else. You want to know what return you're getting out of that investment, if it's truly an investment. And so somebody said, well, the NFPA numbers, they said, don't use that for staffing. Yep, I saw that. And you know what I did? I went and started looking at actual websites. I went to all those cities' actual websites, pulled up their budgets and their staffing, which is out there, it's in the public domain. And guess what it did? It validated those numbers. So there are cities out there operating safely, I may add, their houses aren't burning down, their citizens aren't leaving, and they're operating at a much more efficient point than the city of Bristol, Virginia. So somebody up here needs to explain that, because somebody else has figured that out. So go look at the numbers. Go pull up these cities that are like Bristol and look exactly how their staff, go to those cities and see how they're laid out, look at their neighborhoods. I lived in some of those cities. I know what the staffing was at Coopville, Tennessee in the fire department because I've lived there for five years. Right? Well, guys, we're kidding ourselves if we're saying, well, it's public safety. No, it's a balance. We're talking about a balance of what's the right number to make sure we don't jeopardize the safety of the citizens, we don't spend taxpayer money that we don't need to spend because we're adequately safe. So it's hypothetical to say anything other than that unless you've got numbers to back it up. All right. The school needs money. That's why we need to put some funds aside, call it restricted or not, for the schools. I don't agree with their capital plan. I thought all those numbers were inflated beyond a reasonable number. But I do agree that we have issues with each of the elementary schools. I've walked through them. We got ADA issues with restrooms, we got access issues, and we got some safety issues. And those need to be dealt with. Okay, so this year, the state gave the school system 850,000 more dollars than they gave them last year. So they're up 850,000 from where they were last year. Right? So we're, we're holding our budget to where it was last year. Like last year, they were up 300 something thousand and we pulled back 300,000. So we're not saying we're going to do that this year. We're saying, okay, the state gave 850,000. Now, let's be smart about what little bit of extra cash we've got, and let's put that money over here to take care of these school issues with the ADA and safety. Right? Because they're immediate, and I don't care how many schools you build, right? You got to do, you got to do that now. They should have been done 20 years ago because the ADA law was passed in 92. And so why is it we're sitting here in 2019 and we're still not compliant with the federal ADA requirements? Right? And I don't care if we're in the public domain, that's irresponsible city government. And what gets you there is you don't ask the hard questions and you don't have the debates that we're having right now, and you don't look at what we should do right. Right? Going forward. Right? And so, yeah, the school needs some money right now. But that school system's got a responsibility to spend that money responsibly and properly and to just give us a laundry list of all these things doesn't make any sense. And it really jeopardizes their credibility as a school system when they do that. So they should go back to the drawing board and come back and say, here are the exact costs, even if we use city labor to help us to put in ADA accessible bathrooms at Highland View. Here's what we need to do, the same thing at Stonewall Jackson. Here's what we got to do to upgrade that elevator, blah, blah, blah. And lay those out and make sure those numbers are reasonable and they're correct. And anybody that's in the construction business or has done this as a career can look at those and know those make sense. And right now, the numbers we were given don't make sense. Do we need to meet with the city? Yes. I mean, the school board? Yes. We have met with them multiple times. And like Dr. Perrigen said, those discussions didn't go very well. Because we were on a different side of that Rubik's Cube and we got discussing about the schools and what the schools needed. Right? It's kind of a hard argument when you're 108 million dollars in debt and you're wanting to build a new school. Doesn't matter if it's budget neutral. Budget neutral, there's a moral obligation to that. You still have to pay that bill whether you like it or not morally. You may not have to pay for it legally, but you morally have to pay that. Or you'll never get another bond out, out of this city ever again at a reasonable rate. So to say we can go ahead and obligate this city for another $35 million at a, at a, a zero budget increase doesn't make any sense. And the credit agencies looked at it and they said the same thing. We can't say that this wouldn't be looked at in a negative light. Of course they wouldn't, because it doesn't make any sense financially for a city that's strapped. So we're not looking about, we're not looking at this right, we're not even thinking about this right. All right, so a couple of other things that were said. Expenditures. If our expectation and our standard of excellence is to see our expenditures go up year over year over year over year over year with no improvements, with no efficiency gains, with no means of saying, they're a million dollars less than where last year, look, look at all the good things the city staff did, but they're $2 million up, we're not in that position. So if you think we're sitting here going to approve and, and say it's a yes for a $2 million plus increase in expenditures, it's a big capital NO for me. You can't afford to do that right now. You cannot afford to do that as a city. And I don't know why everybody is so comfortable now that we're in some financial heaven. Right? Right? Because you're going to be back in financial you-know-what before you know it if you don't start being very critical about where every single dollar is spent. Yep, professional services. Right? So how important is professional services versus a new police car? How important is giving another $75,000 to the CBB versus a new police car? Has anybody seen the police cars getting towed around the city? Has anybody seen the 2,000 models we have running around? You've got priorities that you have to set to spend every tax dollar. So when you say we're going to go up on some of these things, to me, at the same time, that's a backhand slap in the face to the police department. Because you're saying that that is a higher priority than the police department not having the means to buy the equipment they need to do public safety. So we should actually be not spending that money and trying to buy one additional police car or two than just the opposite of that. Right? So what's the priority of the city? The citizens, I think they know. I think it's, number one is public safety. Right? It's fire and police. But the numbers have to be right. They have to have the equipment to do the job, and you can't overstaff them. They've got to be staffed for the size of this city. That's a fact. What other priorities? Public schools, education. If we don't give the schools money and get them out of this tailspin of where they're going down the toilet because we can't do what we need to do for the schools, it just feeds on the inmate issue that the sheriff's department has to deal with and all the other people that come into the city. Okay, so when you want to argue the fact that we've got a number of 44 firemen and we could go to 48, remember, if we could really manage that department with two fire stations and keep this city safe with 28, like Dantville's doing and, and Waynesboro and Staunton and all these others I mentioned, and they're out there, do you know what the difference of that is? It's a million dollars. That's a million dollars that we could use to do what? Spend on the schools. All right, so let's say you do that same thing next budget cycle, and you do it the next budget cycle after that. Before we know it, five years have gone by and we've just burnt through $5 million that could have been applied to a down payment to a brand-new school. So we're just, we just don't have our priorities right. One thing is reason I won't vote for this budget. Because you can't, you can't say that money to these other places is more important than the public safety side. And then at the same time, you can't say public safety is not spending too much money when we know there's things out of whack. They are, it's a fact. I've talked to more people outside this city that could care less whether Bristol, Virginia survives or not. People that were professional fire chiefs, professional fire department folks. I asked them the same questions. You know what? They agreed with me because they've been doing it for a career. Talked to a guy at lunch one day for two hours of why, how they budget, why they staff the way that, so we've got an issue, folks. Now, where, where the right number is, we need to reconcile that. But I'll tell you right now, it's not 44. And it's not 48. Right? And this city got away with two fire stations for a long time, now why do we need three? So, you know, put your egos in your pocket when you come in the door, put your emotions aside, and start really looking at the numbers. Let's, let's prove to ourselves why we're making the decisions we're making. Show the numbers, just like you'd solve a math problem. Show the proof in the numbers of why we are saying what we're saying. Because if you don't do it, that's why government and politicians get you in trouble. Because they don't look at the facts and don't look at the numbers. And then you wake up 10 years from now wondering why the heck you're in 108 million dollars worth of debt. Right? So I'm a no vote. Already mentioned my issues, the big ones. So that's where I'm at on this budget.
All right, it looks like we've kind of reached a stalemate. So, I mean, is, is there anything else anybody's got to say? Because I'm kind of, I'm kind of done as far as this evening.
Okay, I'm done. I'm done. You done done? Or anything else?
Well, I just want to, I mean, I may be opening a can of worms here, but tell you what the heck.
Can I give you a can of them or help you?
I want to, I think there may be a misconception in regards to the amount of budget increase. What you see on the hard numbers is there is an increase of roughly 2.2, 2.3 million. Now roughly, 1, 1.3 million of that is offset by state and federal revenue. So there's roughly about a eight, $900,000 increase net local funding. The majority of that goes to raises to the employees, which was $400,000, information technology needs, which was $72,000, and then to fund capital, which was $325,000. The other piece of that was to the CBB, which was $50,000, which is exactly where it was in the budget last year. And it's also based on conversations that occurred, I'm going to say, back in June and July last year, when the, when it was cut, I know there was a change of heart and we discussed at length throughout the fall and, and that maybe CBB needed to be funded based on a percentage level of what the lodging tax rate was. So based on that percentage level that we discussed, that's why it was at $100,000. And then the reserve account is at a little over $1 million right now. I know there's been a lot of talk about the fire department. To be quite honest, I did not hear three council members say it's time to reduce the fire department or cut it down to one station or two stations. I think as, hopefully, the, the community, the citizens of this community know, and hopefully I've shown this council, I don't do things on a limb. Try to study it. I do, I'm very conservative in my approach when it comes to revenue, and I'm very strict when it comes to expenditures. And it's something that I think for the past two years I've shown. And I understand there may be differences in regards to how we get to where we want to go as a city, but that's the political aspect of the job that I absolutely detest. And Mr. Wingard and I had a, I'll say, a spirited conversation a week or so ago. That's one reason I respect and love Mr. Wingard. We can have those conversations, and I think we can both always walk out of the room and shake hands, and we know where each other stands. But I did tell him, when it comes to budgetary issues, the politics behind that, that's something I can't control. And when there are ideological differences amongst council members, those are things that need to be worked out amongst council in order to facilitate the budget process. I would love to be able to facilitate that one-on-one with each of you all. I would probably need another person of me to do that, just due to the amount of time that it takes. There are a lot of valid points here tonight that were made. I'm not disagreeing with any, anything that anybody said here. There are things that we can probably do more efficiently, things that I want to do more efficiently, and I want to have a city that runs efficiently, that runs effectively, and that not only we can be proud of, but Southwest Virginia can be proud of and the entire Commonwealth of Virginia can be proud of. Because at the end of the day, in my opinion, when I was growing up, Bristol was the capital of Southwest Virginia. And there's no reason we cannot be the capital of Southwest Virginia again. Not only do we need to show the citizens of Bristol that we know what we're doing, we need to show Southwest Virginia that we know what we're doing, and we need to show Richmond that we know what we're doing. And one thing I believe that Richmond's already picked up on is the fact that they've asked Ms. Stradlin and I to speak at a national conference in regards of how localities come out of devastating financial situations. I will say that if it probably wasn't for the council in the spring of 2017, I don't know if this city would be in the shape that it's in now. Because there were changes that were made that were tough calls, not everybody liked it, but there were tough calls that had to be made. I was cognizant of that last year in the budget process, and I think if you look at last year's budget compared to the 17, six, let's see, 16, 17 budget, you will see that there were not any increases of significance last year in last year's budget. $900,000 net local increase, I know that's a big number, but when you look at what that $900,000 is going to, I think I was trying to meet the goals that council had set early in the spring, and that's why you see those numbers there. So.
All right, any other comments? All right, we're adjourned.